Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January tenth, two thousand and thirteen, meeting of the Gostown Planning Board. As usual, we will begin with introductions. Brian?
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Phil DeVanzo, Selectman.
John Heikel, Vice Chair.
Caleb Reck, Recording Secretary.
Tim Redmond, Chair.
Brian Hanson.
Barbara Griffin.
Mark Warden.
And Richard Beatty via telephone.
Thank you, everyone. The first order of business tonight is the minutes from December thirteenth, meeting two thousand and twelve. Does anybody have any corrections or changes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Phil, seconded by Mark. Any discussion of the motion? Tonight, we'll vote by roll call. All those in favor of the motion, we'll begin with Mark Warden, starting at that end of the table.
Mark Warden votes aye.
Aye.
Brian Hanson, aye.
Tim Redmond, yea.
John Heikel, aye.
Phil DeVanzo, aye.
Richard Beatty, aye.
All in favor. Now, the second order of business in the meeting tonight is the public hearing on the zoning amendments that are being proposed for the ballot this year. Brian, I'm going to let you handle the reading of the amendments as we go through them, and I suppose we should take them individually and open the public hearing and discuss them individually. Would that be an appropriate way to handle it?
Yep.
Anybody have any disagreements with that? Okay, then, at this time, then, I will consider the public hearing to be open for the zoning amendments. If you'd wish to speak from the public, please be recognized and wait your turn, and you will be recognized. Brian?
Okay. I'll just start at the top. The first zoning amendment proposed is, shall the town adopt Article Two, amending Section six point four point two of the zoning ordinance, sign prohibitions by allowing electronic sign content to change no more frequently than once every fifteen seconds, and not requiring a conditional use permit for signs that have electronically changed content. The content, the current regulation requires sign content to change no more frequently than once in twenty-four hours. This was proposed by the planning board and by petition. It shows up as Article Two on your list here, as well as Article twelve.
Okay, thank you, Brian, for the reading. So, before we begin, we need to decide if we're going to have one or the other, because I don't think we can actually have both on the ballot, because they both essentially, I believe they both essentially say the same thing.
They do. They're exactly the same.
So, as a board, we need to decide if we're going to propose the ballot set forth by the, by the board, or by the petitioner. Barbara?
Well, I think we probably want to decide whether we're voting on these as we address them, or at the end, I'm assuming, sort of at the end, after we get public comment. But my suggestion would be, for purposes of order of the vote, that we take up first the two petitioned articles, which are, to my read, identical to two proposed by the board, and then if those pass, we can then withdraw our warrant articles, and that way there will not be two on to the ballot, and there will be no danger of a conflicting result at a town meeting vote. If the, I must, by saying that, I presume that the result would be that the petitioned articles would pass. If they did not pass, a similar motion could be made as to ours, again, to conflict. But my suggestion would be that we address these for voting purposes at the conclusion of the public hearing, and that we address the petitioned articles first.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything else to say? Mark?
Yeah, do we know exactly what the town clerk would do if they were both passed? Would, for example, just be on the town ballot once, and then parenthetically say it was submitted and approved as a petition article and as a planning board article?
I don't have that answer for you. Go ahead.
And if we did, as Barbara said, which is a vote on the petition articles first, that would include, if we decide to approve them, that would be noted on, in the ballot, right? That it was approved by the planning board, or disapproved, or whatever?
Right.
Right?
Generally, I think there's a-
But not just our internal ones that we presented, but also the petition ones?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Generally, I believe, Mark, that the planning board vote is listed at the bottom of the petition, of the, any article, recommended by the board for three, not recommended by the board for three, or whatever vote actually is recorded at the meeting. They do record the vote of the planning board at the ballot, and it's shown at the bottom of the article, how the planning board voted, whether to, to endorse it or not to endorse.
Yeah, I've never seen that. Okay, thank you.
The other thing, too, is, once a petition article is accepted, doesn't it have to go on the ballot?
The only way it can be withdrawn, it can be withdrawn, but it would require the signature of every person who signed the petition, so as a practical matter, they are never withdrawn.
So, as a practical matter, if they are identical wording, and the petition article has to be on the ballot, it would seem to be a moot point to even discuss the articles that our board has presented, if they are identical to the petitioned article.
As a matter of fact, one could argue that voters would be confused, and might just, because they don't understand, vote for one and not vote for the other, because they don't really know what the difference is.
Or they're just tired, or something.
Yeah, but yeah, by the time they get to the plan, the end.
So, would it be appropriate to, to discuss these, both articles, that have the same wording, or should we, as a board, decide not to put the two board articles on that are exactly as those are? Is that out of-
I think the latter makes sense to me.
Is it out of, am I doing, is that not correct, to do it that way?
I think that makes sense. It would make it very clear, and, you know, no one would question what's going on.
So, we'll identify these articles. Article one, Article two, and Article twelve, read identically. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, so if we take them one at a time, would I be looking for a motion to remove the planning board's Article number two from the ballot? Is that what-
I move that we remove the Article number two from the ballot.
Well, I'm, we're just, okay, you have your motion. Phil, you have a comment?
Well, the point I was going to make is that technically not on the ballot, because we haven't voted to put a placement on the ballot.
We need to vote to per, to deal, my suggestion would be, we hold the, we go through all the proposed warrant articles, one, two, one, I'm doing what you did, two through thirteen, and hold a public hearing as we proceed on those articles to, we have technically already had the public hearing on our planning board articles, this is technically the, the public hearing on the petitioned warrant articles, which we could not do the last time, but just to have the public hearing on all of them. After we finish the articles, it might be prudent then to close the public hearing on the articles, and then to take up voting on the petitioned articles first, starting with Article twelve. And after considering twelve and thirteen, we would move to two, at which point, if Article twelve had been placed on the ballot with a recommended, it's going to go on the ballot, so we don't have to make that motion, the, the motion would be whether we recommended it or not, then Article two could be, there could be a vote to not place it on the ballot, or simply no motion to place it on the ballot, and it would die.
Would you withdraw your motion at this point, Brian?
I do, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, Brian, so let's start with Article twelve, then, please, which is identical to the one you read.
So, I just read it.
Please read it again.
I'm not, do you want me to read it again?
I think so, because it is Article twelve.
Okay. Shall the town adopt Article twelve, amending Section six point four point two of the zoning ordinance, sign prohibitions by allowing electronic sign content to change no more frequently than once every fifteen seconds, and not requiring a conditional use permit for signs that have electronically changed content? The current regulation requires song, sign content to change no more frequently than once in twenty-four hours, submitted by petition.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody on the board have any comments, questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak to this article? Please come forward and pull up a chair and identify yourself for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Leonard Stewart, live on Worthley Hill Road. For the record, I'm an alternate member of the zoning board, but I'm speaking tonight on my individual behalf. I would only say, after sitting through a very long discussion of this sign ordinance at a recent ZBA meeting, I think this is a reasonable and sensible change. It gets our statutes up with the current state of sign technology. I believe the current law says something on the order of, can't change any more than twenty-four hour, once in every twenty-four hours, or it shall be deemed a moving sign or simulating movement. I think it's a good update, and I would certainly support it.
Thank you, Leonard. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Brian, could we go on to Article thirteen, please?
Yep. Article thirteen, shall the doc, shall the town adopt Article thirteen, amending Section three point one point, three point one-two of the zoning ordinance, table of accessory uses to principal residential uses, Table A ten, by eliminating the requirement for a special exception for the raising and keeping of poultry as an accessory use to a principal residential use in a residential one and residential two districts, and by making this use permitted, a permitted accessory use to a principal residential use in those districts.
Submitted by petition.
Submitted by petition.
Okay. Of course, these will be retyped for the ballot, since residential is spelled incorrectly on the third line.
And I, and the word A is also, and needs to be inserted between making this use, A permitted accessory use, on the, on the fourth line.
A permitted accessory use. Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments about this article? Mark, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comment has to do with the term poultry, because looking through the minutes from last meeting, it was brought up that poultry might include other animals, but if I'm not mistaken, what the town ordinance is, that if a term is not defined, then we use the common definition, or maybe the dictionary definition. So, I just wanted to look up, I looked up poultry, and basically it says domesticated fowl collectively, especially those valued for their meat and eggs, such as chickens, turkeys, ducks, geese, and guinea fowl. So, I think it was, in the minute's way, it said something about ostriches, but I think in the common vernacular, that would not be included in poultry. So, I just want to make sure that the voters that are, you know, if they read the minutes, they want to know, we're really basically talking about chickens.
Is that Webster's dictionary definition, and where did you get that definition from?
This one is dictionary.com, and Merriam-Webster, Merriam, excuse me, Merriam-Webster definition is domesticated herds kept for eggs or meat, from the old French poulet, chicken.
So, so it's your assessment that turkeys and ostriches are not included in that? Or are turkeys included in that?
My assessment is that ostriches would not be included in this.
Okay. Now, is that, we'll get to you, Phil, I'm not ignoring you. Are we all in agreeance, or do we need to further define the term to make sure that it is a clear amendment, and not a vague amendment?
Well, I don't know if we can change the wording at this point. We certainly can't change the wording of the ballot, petition ballot.
Okay, okay.
Really, just for more public comment to be on the record.
Richard, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Floor's yours.
One thing, one thing, thank you, Mr. Chairman, one thing that we can do, because we have language that the exact changes that these proposed warrant articles reflect, the exact wording of those is kept in the Planning and Zoning Office. So, you know, I, I would not be opposed to listing out the types of animals if the rest of the board were, were amenable to that as a helpful idea, if we want to say it's chickens, turkeys, geese, ducks. So, I think what we don't want to do, though, is say, but not ostriches, and not this, but say, say what we're talking about as we define poultry with the common dictionary definition in guinea fowl. Just a thought.
Thank you, Richard. Phil, your floor's yours.
I think what you need to look at is what the definition of poultry is by the United States Department of Agriculture.
And do you have that definition?
But I think it includes ostrich. Ostriches are raised for eggs and meat, even though they're nasty, they-
Now, if we go back to Richard's suggestion about defining, is that, is that an avenue we have, Brian, through the, through your office?
No.
To define those terms?
Next year, it will be, but we cannot make any substantial changes to the language of this article, whether it be the planning board recommended article, or the petition article at this point. The notice has gone out and must stay the same. If it's a typographical error, then we can make that change, or, or non-substantial change in that manner, but if we're making definitions, that would be a substantial amendment to this, and we can't do that at this point. We would have had to have done it at the last hearing.
We go back to you, Richard. Do you have a better knowledge of this definitions that you were speaking of?
I have, my, my one comment would be, would be this, given what Mark Warden said, is that our, our, our zoning ordinance states the terms not defined in the zoning ordinance are defined by common dictionary definitions. And I think no stretch of the imagination would say that the USDA definition of poultry is the common dictionary definition. So, if for some reason, a rogue ostrich farmer decided to settle in Gostown and raise six-foot birds, it would become a zoning enforcement issue, where the zoning officer would say, "Excuse me, Mr. Ostrich Farmer, the common dictionary definition of poultry, as used in Gostown, does not include ostriches, so ostriches are in violation of Section three point one point two of our zoning ordinance." And it would become an enforcement issue. I don't know a whole lot about ostriches, but I generally don't see them living in the snow.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody else have any other comments on the board? Do we have any public comments on this?
Barbara has.
I'm sorry, Barbara, I didn't see you. Put your hand up quick. I was looking in that-
I did, I, yeah.
I appreciate what was being attempted to be done in this article. I get it. But the two issues that were raised when this was brought forward was, from the very beginning, the definition of poultry, if you go back to the first night we talked about this, that was raised as an issue, and the other issue, which we're not talking about, that I'm going to mention, because I do have sort of an issue on this, is that this applies to R one and R two. And there is a huge difference in lots between R one and R two. And now, I also appreciate that drafting things that contain words, as members of our legislature know, is a very difficult process, but words mean something, and you don't get to pick what they mean when you decide the one you pick might not be doing exactly what you want. And the reality is, is that I don't even need two lawyers to argue the common definition of poultry. I could pick any two people off the street and come up with a different dictionary, meaning, and whether it's dictionary.com, or Merriam's Webster's, or authoris.com, or my old paperback dictionary from college, they're all going to be slightly different, and I believe one of the definitions that Mark read said, including but not limited to, or more commonly referred to. That means the door is wide open on those definitions. Now, do I think as a practical matter, you're going to have an enforcement issue with ostriches? No. But the reality is, is that the, the use of the term poultry is not chickens. It's not. And there was a reason why it was permitted as a term, poultry, in the agricultural and conservancy districts, where lots are a minimum of two and five acres, as compared to R one and R two, where it was permitted by special exception, where lots can be as small as a tenth of an acre, if you have a non-conforming lot in this town. So, I get that you're saying there won't be an enforcement issue, but I need to tell you, Brian can probably tell you that, and I have no idea, Brian, I'm looking at you, that he probably has at least ten things on his desk, which at one point, people thought were not going to be an enforcement issue, that are now, because people have different interpretations of what things mean. So, I simply point that out. I'd like to thank Brian for pointing out that we cannot make a change in a definition at this point. The article needs to go forward as it's been presented. So, I, I wanted to say those things on the records, so the board understands, when it addresses these, that unfortunately, at this point, we don't have the flexibility to address those issues.
All right, we have to discuss the language as it's presented, and make a determination whether or not we want to recommend the language as it's presented, or not recommend the language as it's presented. We can't make any changes to it at this point.
And that's the reality. We're recommending language. We may think it's a good thing or a bad thing, but the reality is, you have to deal with the language you have. And we do the best job we can, every year, with zoning articles, to try and address everything, and I don't think there's been a year in the history of this planning board that there hasn't been a warrant article that's come forward to be put on the board, where at the last minute, people are looking at it going, whoops, the, sort of the unintended consequence, so.
Thank you, Barbara. John, did you have something?
No, I didn't.
Mark is next.
Yeah, thank you. It's my understanding that we're not introducing a new term here into the language. It's already in there, in the ordinance, about raising and keeping of poultry as an accessory use to principal residents, right? We're just eliminating the requirement for a special exception.
Right.
So, it's been in there for a long, long time.
Well, our ordinance actually does not define it.
It doesn't define it, but it uses the term poultry, and it's been there a long time, right?
Yeah. The only thing it does, though, Mark, is, under special exception, the board would have the ability to question an applicant, and an applicant would state what their-
Zoning board.
Well, my mistake. The zoning board would question an applicant, and they would have to state the purpose of their intent, and if they stated, "We are going to raise chickens, and we want the special exception," then if they decided to raise ostriches, they would be in violation of their agreement, and they would be told to stop. And that, in that case, you would have some teeth with which to, to enforce the rules, but this one seems to be toothless at this point, so. Does anybody else have anything else to add to this?
Did you hear something?
I, I-
Okay, John?
I'm just looking here, but is it in the ordinance to, that talks about the dictionary, the common term?
Yes.
It, it is. And it's a common dictionary? It's not?
It's on the first page of the glossary. It says, "Words and phrases not defined in this glossary shall have their common dictionary meaning."
Okay.
Okay.
So, not blacks or bovier.
We can come back to the board.
Okay.
Did you, something, Phil? Were you waving your hand?
Well, I guess to follow up on Barbara's comments, if poultry is a permitted use in the agricultural zone, and poultry is a permitted use, becomes a permitted use in the residential one and residential two, it would seem to me that the poultry that you were permitted to raise in the agricultural district is going to be the same poultry that you're permitted to keep and raise in the residential district. There's no difference, because the term poultry is used for the other. So, if a person wanted to raise ostriches in the agricultural zone, I don't see what we have that would prevent them from raising ostriches in the agricultural zone. Or you wanted to have fifty roosters.
Okay, Scott's been waiting patiently. Would you like to come forward and identify yourself, please?
Thank you. My name is Scott Bartlett. I live at twenty-three Warren Ave. I'm in the R two zone, in the Pinardville area. I am the assessor of the town of Gostown, but I am not here as, in my capacity, as an assessor. I'm here as a resident, as I said, in the R two zone. I would ask that the board oppose this, and, and vote to not recommend this particular article. I've spent some time looking at this article, and also going online and reading about urban chickens. There seems to be a movement across the country to allow chickens in urban areas, and I don't think I would be opposed to urban chickens if this article was well thought out and written to not only allow a property owner to have chickens, but also to protect the neighbors. This article does not. It simply allows the use of poultry. It doesn't even say chickens. It says poultry. And poultry can include a lot of different things. When looking through the ordinances that I felt were well-written, there were certain things that were very clearly not allowed in these smaller areas. Number one is roosters. Under the, the wording of this, roosters would be allowed, and I can tell you, in the R two zone, in the area I live, the average size lot is about seven thousand square feet, and you put a rooster right next to my house, I'm not going to be a happy resident. I think that's something that needs to be, well, again, it can't be added, and so that's why I'm asking the board to oppose this. The other is, is the word poultry. Poultry can be a lot of different things, and you keep talking about ostriches, which I never even thought of, but my concern was geese. As an assessor, I've run into geese. Geese are nasty animals, and they're, they're better watch animals than, than dogs are. Again, a goose on a large lot is not an issue, but on a small lot, without any restrictions as to how the- as to how these, the poultry is contained, does there have to be a fence, can they roam freely, that's not in here. The other issue, again, looking at the ordinances that I did read, that I thought were well thought out, was the hen houses, or the houses that these, the poultry are put in. Most of the ordinances have instructions as to how far that house has to be from lot lines, how it has to be constructed. The ordinances also deal with the waste of the poultry. This does not. So I would ask the board to oppose this. I would ask the board to vote not to recommend this, and look at this again for next year. I'm not coming here and saying that chickens shouldn't be allowed at all, although in the R2 zone, I'm not sure if they should ever be allowed in the R2 zone. But if something, if an ordinance was put forward that did look at some of these issues, it did limit it in the R1 zone to just chickens. It did say that no roosters were allowed. It also looked at density. How many chickens per acre? Again, under this, on a 5,000-square-foot lot, you could have 20, 30 chickens. That is not reasonable. And that is not something that a neighbor is going to be able to enjoy their property if they have that many chickens. Under this, that would be allowed, and I don't think that's reasonable. So, that's all I had to say, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Come back to the board for any comments from the board.
I have a question for Scott. Sir, do you mind?
Scott, go ahead. Scott, could you ask, come back up to the microphone, answer a question, please?
Sir, you said there was a movement across the country for urban chicken raising. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, there seems to be, and again, this is just from research that I did on the internet. And I put in, I started out chickens in cities, and I found the term urban chickens. And the articles I was reading were saying that there does seem to be a demand where more people want to have two or three chickens in an urban setting so that they can have eggs, and to help themselves with this current economy. I'm not saying, you know, I did an extensive amount of research on it, but this is what I found.
Okay. Satisfied?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Right.
Go ahead, John.
What I've heard about that, too, about people wanting to raise them, is one is the fear of shortages of food at any particular time. They don't trust organic necessarily, of being truly organic. They want to eat fresh eggs. And that's basically the reason that they're doing this. They want to know where their eggs have been.
Okay. Anyone else? Len, you want to come up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself once again?
Okay. Leonard Stewart from Worthley Hill Road, again. I think that Barbara first touched on it, and Mr. Bartlett went further on one of the reasons I'm here. I just think you're going to be posing, if it's passed in this fashion, a big enforcement problem without the special exception process to grill the property owners, say, how many chickens are you keeping, what kind of quarters, et cetera? Are you going to have roosters or not? You're setting it up to become rapidly a nuisance, particularly in an R2 zone. What someone might consider 10 or 15 chickens, that's reasonable to me, but it might not be reasonable to their neighbor. I think that in looking at it, and again, I think it's a good idea, it's healthy eating, come back to it, but have some sort of regulation that perhaps specifies how many chickens you can keep, whether it's advisable to allow it in the R2 zone. I think, I don't think Barbara was exaggerating when she said a tenth of an acre on some of the tinier lots over on the other end of town. You know, I don't think it's well-drawn. I think it's going to pose enforcement problems down the line, and I would also suggest that you not recommend it.
Thank you, Len. Any other board comment on this article before we move on? Okay, Brian, we'll go back to Article 2. Is the board in agreement that since we've read the article, and it is identical to Article 12, we do not have to discuss it?
I agree.
Is there any? Everyone agrees to that?
I agree.
Yep.
Okay, Richard said yes? Okay, good. We will go on to Article 3, which is, in essence, an identical article to Article 13. So does the board agree, concur, that we would do the same as we just did at Article 2?
Yes.
Everyone concurs? Okay, we'll move on to Article 4, Brian.
Okay, Article 4. Shall the town adopt Article 4, amending Section 5.6 of the zoning ordinance, commercial kennels? To read, "Commercial kennels are permitted provided that they are located on lots of not less than two acres, and that no buildings or structures for commercial kennel use are located within 100 feet of any lot line. The current regulation leaves out the words, quote, 'for commercial kennel use,' unquote, seen in the above proposed amendment."
Thank you, Brian. Any member of our board wish to comment on this article?
Mr. Chair, I'll only just mention that this is a clarification of the current ordinance only. It's not to impose any additional regulation. It just clarifies that additional buildings and structures, such as a house, or shed, or garage, that's on the property, that does not have anything to do with a commercial kennel, would not be subject to the 100-foot setback rule.
That'll be explained in the article presentation, in the voter's guide.
I just wanted to explain that for any public who's listening tonight, that this is just a clarification item, more than anything else.
And I assume that that information will be available in the voter's guide, that it is a clarification, and you'll state the clarification?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody from the public like to comment on Article 4? Okay, I'll come back to the board one more time. We all sat on Article 4 as a board?
Yes.
Okay, Richard? Good? Okay. Article 5, Brian.
Article 5. Shall the town adopt Article 5, amending Section 5.12 of the zoning ordinance, home occupation by eliminating subsection 5.12.4 in its entirety? Currently, subsection 5.12.4 reads, "Goods sold at retail should be only those manufactured or assembled on the premises," proposed by the planning board.
Anybody from the board have any questions or comments on this? Well, I for one have, feel that we are creating a situation that could get out of control. The whole purpose of a home occupation was so that you could manufacture and produce goods to be sold while you stayed at home. I don't know that this, the wording on this is worded properly, because it means that I could start buying televisions by the truckload and sell them out of my house and off my front porch. It doesn't prohibit me from doing that, any home occupation. It doesn't say that the home occupation has to be tied to the products you're selling. If you're a quilter, and you want to have quilts and sell them that you manufacture, you could conceivably buy quilts and sell them. But that's not stopping you from buying sewing machines, and thread, and everything else, and running all that stuff out of your house. So, I think, I personally think this is a little too broad, and I think it's, I think it's a little bit out of the range of what a home occupation is defined as. And I'm sure that'll draw some comments. Mark?
I've got one, too.
Well, Richard, you'll have to go after Mark, because he had his hand up before you made a noise.
Thank you.
Are there already limitations in the ordinances about traffic nuisance, if you have a home-based business?
I don't know. Brian can answer that possibly.
So, to follow up on the example of the televisions, yeah, instead of, you could buy television somewhere else and sell one a month, but if you're making blankets at home, and you're selling a dozen a day, it's going to be more of a nuisance to your neighbors. So, I don't know what the spirit of this originally was, and I don't think it's so scary.
Okay. Richard, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason that I brought this up initially was the word "should." And I, my opinion is that I consider "should" to be unenforceable from the perspective of the zoning officer, because "should" is merely a recommendation. So our current ordinance is not a, an ordinance in itself, it's a recommendation. So what I'm saying is, we either say something is allowed, or something is not, not what we think would be nice. And our current ordinance says what we think would be nice.
Thank you, Richard. Does that, does that agree with your reading of the ordinance, Brian, what Richard has just stated?
Yes. Yeah, it says, "Goods sold at retail should be only those manufactured or assembled on the premises." "Should" is definitely a recommendation, not a "shall," which is a requirement.
So, is the rest of the-
And that's getting taken out.
Is the rest of the description of home occupation have definition there as to anything that relates to a home occupation? Or is it wide open to interpretation?
There are several criteria that people have to meet in order to do a home occupation. I can go through each of them if you'd like, or-
There are a number of different of home occupations, not all of which would be related to the sale of retail goods.
Right.
That's the issue. If you wanted to go through the home occupation statute, it deals with a lot of them that would have nothing to do with this. And I would just further comment that I think that we discussed as a board whether or not if this was indeed the issue as to whether "should" was suggestive rather than mandatory, whether or not this "should" should be changed then to "shall." And my recollection is, that was not the intent of this, so.
Because that could negatively impact some businesses that can operate as a normal home occupation, but would not be able to under that terminology.
I don't think, I don't recall discussing anything specific in regards to that, but I think I recall that statement, yeah.
Anyone else on our board like to speak? Okay, we can come back. Anybody from the public wish to speak to Article 5? Okay, we'll come back to the board for one last go-around. Does anybody on this board have anything to say? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to Article 6, Brian.
Okay. Article 6. Shall the town adopt Article 6, amending Section 3.11 of the zoning ordinance, Table of Principal Uses, Table G1, by eliminating the requirement for a special exception for the sale or rental of motor vehicles, boats, trailers, or recreational vehicles in the commercial industrial flex zone and industrial districts, and by making this use a permitted use in those districts, proposed by the planning board?
Okay. Members of the board, anybody want to start off with anything?
I just have a question.
Barbara?
This is more a history question, and Brian, quite honestly, I can't remember when this came out, but maybe Phil does. Does anybody remember the application for somebody to essentially open a yard of scrapped vehicles?
Yep. I do. They wanted to open a yard where they could bring in vehicles that were-
Compounded or something?
Considered total-
Losses, I think.
Total losses, and they were going to-
Hold them, and they shipped them, like, overseas, and sold them.
And we discussed whether it was going to become a junkyard or not, basically.
Right. They were maintaining it wasn't a junkyard.
They were maintaining that it was not.
Right. So that would come under this, right? I think when we were talking about it, wasn't this the provision that it was going to come in under? Because they came in, because they needed to get some guidance as to whether or not it would be allowed?
I think they, I think they stated that in their opinion, it was a permitted use based on their operation. And their operation was not junking, not dismantling, it was storage and resale of-
Right. I think this was the section I came in.
Salvage vehicles, or something like that.
Okay. All right. I think they thought it would be permitted. Okay, thanks.
That was probably about five or six years ago.
Okay, okay. But this was the section, okay.
Okay. All right. If nobody on the board would like to make any further comments, I'll open it to the public, and any of the public like to speak to Article 6? All right?
Len. Len's saying he wants.
Oh, I'm sorry, Len, you didn't have your hand up when I was looking at you.
I didn't get it up fast enough.
You have to be faster.
I know, we're moving right along. Leonard Stewart, again. I'm going to pose this question, which I think is also going to apply equally to the following two articles that you're going to consider, and the changes that we appear to be making here in the commercial industrial flex zone. I have reservations, because I can see with this type, if these three things become permitted uses in the commercial industrial flex zone, we're going to be moving towards something that we tried to get away from. If I remember, a lot of these things came in in the mid-'90s, so that we did not have a commercial strip that stretched all the way from Henry Bridge Road down almost to the Villa Augustina. I, I just can't understand. I think it's reasonable if somebody comes in and makes a good business case for it here, it might be, but to give a blanket, okay, and again, I'm not trying, but I don't want to get up, have to get up and say the same thing three times on these three articles, to make them a permitted use with no need for review of what the operations are going to be like, anything like that. I just, I don't see why we need to, and I think we pose, if you want to call it, an aesthetic threat to the town of making that whole stretch of road. And I've looked up where the commercial industrial flex is basically from the police station area down past Tatro's gas station, almost, of the villa. I think we run the risk of making a commercial strip out of it. Is that the direction we want the town to go in? I don't think so, and I would strongly recommend that on this and on the following article, those that you not recommend them. I would keep them subject to, you know, a review before granting. That's it. Thank you.
Before you get up, Len, they, they would have to come before the board with a site plan, and site plans are reviewed, so anything they would propose to be doing would be reviewed by the board, and approved or denied by the board. They would have the right to do that type of business in the zone after review by the planning board and approval of a site plan. So it's not an open ticket to go in and do whatever they want. They still have to come before the board.
Although, being a permitted use, I mean, however many times they'd want to come back to the board, you might get it down to something, but the question to me is, do you want a car lot, or do you want a gas station there in the first place? I think when, and, once again, I'll make reference to the one ahead, revoking the two-mile thing between gas stations. If I remember, that came in around the mid-'90s, when we had those two developments, and people did not want more gas stations along that strip. You couldn't, you could review the site plan, but, you know, you couldn't deny it as a bad use of the property. Again, I just, I just feel it's not in the best interest of the town, and I'd suggest voting against it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Shall we put you down for Articles 7 and 8 as the same opinion?
I mean, that's, that's basically, it's the same comment and the same question on all three of those.
Thank you, Len. Back to the board on Article 6? Okay, no more discussion. Article 7, Brian.
Article 7. Shall the town adopt Article 7, amending Section 3.11 of the zoning ordinance, Table of Principal Uses, Table G3, by eliminating the requirement for a special exception for the retail sale of gasoline in the commercial, commercial industrial flex zone and industrial districts, and by making this use a permitted use in those districts, proposed by the planning board?
Okay, I will, for the record, I'll let it be known that Len Stewart is against Article 7.
Thank you.
Anyone from the board wish to speak to this matter?
Clarification?
Please, John.
Existing service station measured by road length, is that driving to it, or that's not a straight line, point-to-point? Is that driving to it? Is that driving to it?
I'm assuming it'd be driving.
Include the curvatures, yeah, so driving.
It was driving from one point to the other, not a straight line as the crow?
I don't think it's a crow fly situation, John. I think it would be by the, by driving road.
Yep, okay.
Anybody else comment from the board? Public comment on Article Seven. Len, you have been duly noted. Article Eight.
Article Eight, shall the town adopt Article Eight, amending Section 5.17 of the zoning ordinance by eliminating subsection 5.17.2 in its entirety. Currently, Section 5.17.2 reads gasoline stations, a gasoline station with or without accessory service paves or convenience stores is not permitted within two miles, lot line to lot line, of an existing service station measured by road length to and from each property. 5.17.2 cannot be waived or lessened.
I will have it noted that Len Stewart is against Article Eight, and I'll go look to the board for comment. Are you making noises over there, Richard?
I'm still with us.
Okay, thank you.
With you.
Okay. Anybody from the board wish to comment or speak to Article Eight? Okay, we'll move on to Nine.
Article Nine, shall the town adopt Article Nine, amending Section 14.9.3 of the zoning ordinance, replacement of nonconforming structures to allow the initiation of replacement of structures lost to fire, natural disaster, or other casualty to be within two years from the date of damage, from the date the damage or destruction occurred. The current regulation requires replacement of such damaged or destroyed structures to be within one year of the date the damage or destruction occurred, proposed by the planning board.
Anyone wish to speak to Article Nine? Barbara?
I just have a question in regards to the, the explanation sentence at the end Doesn't it require initiation of replacement, not replacement, right?
Yes, that's initiation.
It's not part of the ballot article, but I, I don't think that's correct, if you read the language of the-
Yeah.
So the last part of, the last part of the, the last sentence should read, "The current regulation requires initiation of replacement of such damaged or destroyed structures to be within one year of the date to be-"
It says it up above, so I, I think it would be okay to make that change, and I don't think that would be-
Right, it's an explanation, and it's exactly what's in there, but it does sort of, it is a little confusing, because I think the intent was to deal with the initiation, not, and when it began, not completion, right?
Right. Right. That's, I think that's a change that can be made to the language that-
Well, it's not part of the actual-
Right, it's an explanation.
ordinance, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, Barbara, because I was thinking the same thing. Anybody on the board? Phil?
Yeah, just a question. Brian, do you know what the word initiation means? Does it mean filing paperwork, applying for permit with the town, or what? What, what is, what is the actual thing that starts initiation to say that it's been initiated?
I'll just read what it says in the actual section. It says, "If the reconstruction or repair is not begun within one year, within the one-year period, then..." So I think the actual construction work has to begin.
Does that language remain in the ordinance as part of this change here?
Yes, it would only just change the, the actual year.
It actually changes from one year to two years is basically what you're doing. That's the only actual change.
You can see that in the, in the, this explanation thing that we-
Okay. So that, does that clarify it for you, Phil?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Open up to the public for Article Nine. Any questions or comments, or Article Nine? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the board. And I see nothing, so we go to Article Ten.
Article Ten, shall the town adopt Article Ten, amending Section 6.6.4 of the zoning ordinance, commercial industrial flex zone, industrial residential, industrial, residential small business office district signs to read, quote, "In the commercial and commercial industrial flex dix, uh, zone districts, one portable A-frame sign per business, not to exceed six square feet of sign area per side, may be placed outside the business within ten feet of the building's entry while the business is open. Note, any use of public property requires permission of the Board of Selectmen." And then the explanation is, "The current regulation allows these signs to be up to three square feet in size."
Proposed by the planning board.
Proposed by the planning board.
Thank you, Brian. Any board members wish to comment? Open to the public to comment on Article Ten. Seeing none, we'll come back to the board. Okay, we'll move on to Article Eleven.
All right. Article Eleven, shall the town adopt Article Eleven, amending Section 6.7.6 of the zoning ordinance, village commercial district signs to read, quote, "One portable A-frame sign per business, not to exceed six square feet of sign area per side, may be placed outside the business within ten feet of the building's entry while the business is open. Note, any use of public property requires permission of the Board of Selectmen." And the explanation is, "The current regulation allows these signs to be up to three square feet in size," proposed by the planning board.
Thank you, Brian. Does anybody have any comment about this from the planning board? All right, open to the public. Does the public wish to comment on Article Eleven? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the board. No comment from the board. I'll leave one last open to the public to make any final comments on any of the articles before we close the public hearing. All right, thank you for coming. The public hearing is now closed. So, I think we will move to Article Twelve first.
I'll make a motion to recommend. It will be placed on the ballot as it is a petitioned article, so I did not include that in my motion.
Article, a motion by Barbara, seconded by Mark. And what was your explanation? It will be placed on the ballot, so you do not have to make a motion as such?
Put it on ballot, because it's going to be on the ballot.
Okay.
All right.
We have a motion made by Barbara, seconded by Mark. Any discussion of the motion?
Yeah, we're clear this motion is just, we're putting it on, or is this to approve it?
To recommend it.
Recommend it to the ballot.
Voters have to approve it.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay, we are going to vote in order by roll call. You'll state your name, and yea or nay when I call for the yea or nay. We'll start with Mark. Richard, you'll be second, and then Barbara will be after you. So that's how we'll vote in that order. And we'll work around the table.
Warden votes yes.
Meany, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Heickel, yes.
Devanza, yes.
Okay. Do you have the count?
Yep.
Okay, our next article is Article Thirteen.
I'll move that the planning board recommend Article Thirteen.
And place it, it's on the ballot anyway by petition. You're right, Mark. Okay, anybody want to second Mark's motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Richard.
Richard Meany.
Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with Mark.
Warden votes yes.
Meany votes yes.
Griffin, no.
Hanson, no.
Redmond, no.
Heickel, yes.
Devanza, no.
So the vote is?
Three, four, no.
Okay, we'll move on to Article Two. Article Two has already been voted to be put on the ballot?
No, it's been publicly noticed to be placed on the ballot. It has not been voted, it has not been formally voted to place on the ballot. So I'll just, to make it clear-
Please clarify the words, inform me, Barbara.
These are proposed by the planning board, but they are subject to our vote to actually put them on the ballot.
Okay.
So just for, they could die for lack of a motion to put them on the ballot, but just for clarification, I am going to make a motion to withdraw from further consideration for zoning amendment Article Two.
Second that.
Okay, motion by Barbara to withdraw Article Two, seconded by Brian.
Phil made it first.
Phil made it first?
Yeah.
I thought Brian.
Go ahead.
Phil made it first and seconded by Phil. I'll just accept your all words. Is there any discussion on the motion to withdraw Article Two?
Just a question for clarification.
Please, Brian, or, Richard, excuse me?
The, the question for clarification is, since, if, if, if the board were to agree to withdraw Article Two, we would still have Article Twelve with the same language, and the only difference would be, it would say parenthetically, "submitted by petition."
It would.
Okay, thank you.
The planning board vote would not be listed at the bottom of the article. Is that correct? Because it was submitted by petition?
Planning board vote is still recom, it's still listed and shown to recommend or to not recommend.
Okay. Well, that confuses me, because it's, it's a petition article.
Doesn't matter, the planning board still presents their recommendation on the petitioned article, on the ballot.
Okay, done. Okay, Article Two has been, has been, made a motion to withdraw. Any discussion? Begin with Mark Warden.
Warden votes yes.
Meany votes yes.
Griffin, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Redmond, yes.
Heickel, yes.
Devanza, yes.
Passes unanimously. Article Three reads the same as Article Thirteen. Only differences is one is Article Thirteen was by petition, Article Three is by, proposed by the planning board.
I'm going to make a, a motion to withdraw from further consideration Article Three.
Hang on a sec, I'm going to second that.
Motion by Barbara to withdraw Article Three, seconded by Brian Hanson. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of withdrawing Article Three, I should, I will say- Yeah, I'm just, am I doing it wrong? Should I just have us vote and count votes rather than ask for a yea or nay?
You've already done it.
Yeah, let's just go by that. I, I'm getting confused. Please, begin with the-
Okay, Warden, no.
Uh, Meany, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Redmond, yes.
Heickel, no.
Devanza, yes.
Passes five, two.
I'll make a motion to place on the ballot as recommended by the planning board Article Four.
I'll second it.
Is that you, Phil?
Yeah.
Barbara's recommended Article Four, seconded by Phil Devanza. Any discussion on the article?
Keep in mind, please, that I'm using the article number for purposes of reference of the motion and not, and I understand that that is not necessarily the article number as it will appear on the ballot, and I trust that administratively, all the references and the voter's guide and the ballot will be changed. Okay.
They'll all start at two, but they'll start at two with number four.
Right.
So four will become two, five will become three, and so on and so forth.
Don't, don't even go there.
So you'll ju-
Don't go there, no, 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 no.
Okay. Article Four. Barbara has made a motion to place it on the ballot, seconded by Phil.
Place on ballot as recommended.
As written and as recommended.
Mm-hmm.
Mark?
Warden, yes.
Meany, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Redmond, yes.
Heickel, yes.
Devanza, yes.
Passes unanimously.
I would just like to point out to the, to this board that it is merely minutes after eight o'clock, and we have already had two unanimous votes. Thank you, Richard, you got it. Everybody else is looking very serious.
We don't, he could be in Hawaii, maybe he's having more fun than we are.
Yeah, that's why he's smiling, he's on a beach somewhere.
Okay.
That'd be nice.
We are at Article Five.
I'll make a motion to, I move that the planning board put on the ballot and recommend Article Number Five.
Motion by Mark, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Richard Meany. Any discussion on the motion? Please begin, Mark.
Warden, yes.
Meany, yes.
Griffin, no.
Hanson, yes.
Redmond, no.
Heickel, yes.
Devanza, no.
Four, three, and it passes. Article Six.
I move that the planning board place on the ballot and recommend Article Number Six.
Motion by Mark to place on the ballot and recommend Six. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by John. Call for a vote, Mark?
Warden, yes.
Meany, yes.
Griffin, no.
Hanson, yes.
Redmond, yes.
Heickel, yes.
Devanza, no.
Five, two, it passes. Article Seven.
I will move that the planning board put on the ballot and list as recommended, Article Number Seven.
Motion by Mark to put it on the ballot and recommend it. Somebody want to second it?
I'll second that.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? Begin the voting with Mark.
Warden votes yes.
Meany votes yes.
Griffin, no.
Hanson, no.
Redmond, yes.
Heickel, yes.
Devanza, no.
Four, three.
Four, three. Article Eight.
I'll make the same motion that the planning board place on the ballot and, place on the ballot as recommended, Article Number Eight.
I'll second that one.
John has seconded that one.
If we don't second it, then we don't vote, or what?
If there's no second, the motion dies.
Okay.
And there's no vote, correct.
Right.
Hence the dead motion.
If, if you need a second, if you need a second, I've got it.
John, Heickel seconded, thank you, Richard.
Okay, all right, didn't hear, thank you.
Speak up, John. Okay, we'll begin the voting with Mark.
Warden, yes.
Meany, yes.
Griffin, no.
Hanson, no.
Redmond, no.
Heickel, no.
Devanza, no.
Fails, five to two. Article Nine.
Before we go on to Article Nine, can I- Before we go on to Article Nine, can I ask-
Yeah.
-Brian for point of order, um, whether or not a motion to remove Article Eight from consideration on the ballot would be appropriate. The planning board has just voted to not recommend something that... I, I wanted to be clear that I think what you've done, by not recommending this, it would not go on the ballot.
Well, I thought the motion was to place on the ballot as recommended, so that was voted no, so it's not going on the ballot.
So, but I, so I want people to understand that, that it's not on the ballot, so that's why I brought it up. I wasn't sure that people did understand that, so-
That's a very good point, because couldn't we make, somebody could make another motion? For example, to put it on the ballot as not recommended. Wouldn't that be an acceptable motion?
I don't, I, to tell you the truth, I don't know the answer to that, so my motion was going to be to withdraw Article Eight from further consideration as it has been voted down by the planning board. So, just like we did with two and three, that's, that's what I think the point of order should be at this point.
And Mark, I think what I've read in the past on ballots is, the only time you read "not recommended" by the planning board is when you have a petition article.
Right.
The, the planning board would not propose an article and then not recommend an article they proposed. The only time we've ever had "not recommended" by the planning board was on a petition article that I can remember in the past.
Any of them in the past that have failed to get a yes vote or recommended vote have been taken off.
Correct, they don't go on, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Because, go ahead, Mark, I'll-
I still like her recommendation to make it absolutely clear in, in the records what the intention was.
Well, without a vote, I think it was clear because your motion was to put the article on the ballot and the-
And recommend.
Yeah, but I don't think it was understood completely, that's why I'm making that further. I am making, so why don't I just make the motion, given the vote, to not recommend Article Eight, I now make a motion to withdraw Article Eight from further consideration for the ballot this year.
Motion by Barbara to withdraw Article Eight.
I second that.
Seconded by Brian Hanson. Okay, we'll have a vote.
So, can we comment?
I'm sorry?
Comment, question?
I'm sorry for rushing you, please, John.
So, we're saying that because we don't, a-and I, I agree with not recommending this, I, I agree with Barbara, I, I'm just not sure that I agree with not letting the people have that decision-
Well, then that's-
-on the ballot, and that's the tough part of this.
That's where a petition article-
Well, that's where a petition article would supersede our-
That's why people put in petition articles, because if we vote it down, they want to make sure it shows up.
I know.
I think that Barbara, please, Brian?
The way I see it, John, is this is just the natural conclusion of what we started. Richard came in with some, with some excellent ideas, and we've discussed them, and this is just sort of the culmination of that, like, are we gonna, are we gonna present these to the public? We're like a, we're like the Congress, sort of putting the ideas together, and if it doesn't get passed up, it doesn't make it to the next level, that's the way I understand it.
I see, right.
You know what I mean?
That's what I see it too, Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Yeah, and- So it just dies.
Phil?
Yeah, I, I don't think that we're gonna put an article on the ballot "not recommended" as a result of that, ours, as a-
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Barbara, seconded by Brian, to withdraw Article Eight. I'm gonna vote on that right now. Beginning with Mark, please.
Warden, yes.
Meany, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Redmond, yes.
Heikel, yes.
The Vanza, yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Free.
Okay, now we'll move on to Article Nine.
I move that the planning board place on the ballot as recommended, Article Number Nine.
Motion by Mark, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Phil DeVansa. Discussion of the motion? Seeing none, we'll begin our voting with Mark, please.
Warden, yes.
Meany?
Richard?
Lights out.
He's calling back in.
Answer. Are you there?
I am back.
All right, Richard, we just made a motion to, to, um, place on the ballot Article Nine by Mark, seconded by Phil, and we just started voting, Mark had voted yes, your vote is next.
I am voting yes.
Thank you, Richard, Barbara?
Griffin, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Redmond, yes.
Heikel, yes.
The Vanza, yes.
Passes unanimously.
Third, is that the fourth one now?
Wow.
Spirit of cooperation. Article Ten. Richard, you want to make this motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion that we, uh, recommend and place on the ballot Article Ten.
I'll second.
Motion by Richard, seconded by Mark, to place Article Ten on the ballot and recommend, I assume, as in the past?
He said that in the motion.
Okay, I did, I did not hear that. Okay, Mark, begin the voting with Mark?
Warden votes yes.
Meany votes yes.
Hi, Griffin, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Redmond, yes.
Heikel, yes.
The Vanza, yes.
Unanimously passed. And the last one is Article Eleven.
Excuse me, um, I just wanted-
Yes, Brian?
-for clarification on the notes, who made the motion and seconded on the last one?
Richard made the motion and Mark seconded it.
I had that backwards, because it's Mark's been doing the whole time, okay?
Well, he, wanted Richard to feel like he was part of the process.
Because Richard did the measuring, so we wanted him to have-
Yes, I did.
And he was afraid he was gonna get-
Because of that, I'll make a motion for this one if no one's made it yet.
Not yet, Richard, you're on.
All right.
Okay, on Article Eleven, I make a motion that we, uh, recommend it and move it to the ballot.
Thank you, Richard, anybody want to second that motion?
Warden, second.
Mark seconded it. Any discussion? Begin the voting with Mark?
Warden, yes.
Meany, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Redmond, yes.
Heikel, yes.
The Vanza, yes.
Passes unanimously. Okay, we have covered all the zoning articles that we needed, amendments we needed to discuss tonight. Um, there's no other zoning business. Richard, we are going to talk about, we're going to have a presentation from Southern New Hampshire Planning, and I don't know if you want to listen in, but, uh, we will leave the line open if you decide.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make the unilateral motion to thank you so much for allowing me to participate in this planning board meeting and take off.
Well, thank you for calling in.
Thank you, sir.
Good night, Richard.
Goodbye.
You killed that thing there, one of you folks?
I have no idea how.
He can, he can watch this on cable, right? If you don't get replayed on cable, he can watch this presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you, uh, Jack Munn with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And, um, I think, uh, Brian's had an opportunity to pass these maps around to you, as well as the fact sheet. And you are the third town that we're making this presentation to. All the planning commissions in the watershed, the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, Central, Southwest, and Nashua have certain towns within their member jurisdictions. Goss Town, Manchester, New Boston, and Ware are located in the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission area. Dunbarton, Henneker, um, um- Um, I'm, I'm sorry, what? Hop, yeah, Hopkinton are in the central area. Uh, Lineburg, uh, Mount Vernon is over in southwest, and in Nashua-
Lineburg?
Lineburg, yes. And I think the other town is, um, let's see, here it is, Greenfield, and France's town, they're over in the southwest area. Mount Vernon and Lineburg are in the, uh, Nashua Planning Commission reading, region. So what we did is, um, applied for a grant to this New Hampshire Department Environmental Service. These are, uh, water quality planning funds that are distributed out for doing water quality planning work. And this is the first time that a grant had actually been applied for to look at aerial photography and document all the impervious surfaces within the watershed outside of the seacoast area in the state of New Hampshire. So, uh, we feel kind of, uh, special and honored that the grant was awarded, and staff here used the University of New Hampshire to help set up the GIS formulas for looking at the aerial photography and documenting the impervious surfaces. And then staff did a, some manual, uh, looking at the photos and made some adjustments. We prepared draft maps, sent those out to all the planning commissions, and the planning commissions reviewed them, and now we're in the process of presenting them to all the towns in the watershed. And it's, it's very useful information. The purpose of the maps is really to raise the awareness of the need to look at, uh, stormwater, the impacts of stormwater on water quality, and to consider that these are tools for, uh, towns and municipalities to use as they manage stormwater runoff, basically.
Before you begin, Jack, could you briefly, um, give us a definition of impervious surface?
Yeah, it's actually on the map.
Yeah.
And it, I'll read it to you, it's impervious surfaces are modified surfaces that cannot effectively absorb or infiltrate water. Examples include, but are not limited to roofs, uh, designed, unless designed to effectively absorb or infiltrate water, decks, patios, paved gravel, or crushed stone driveways, parking areas, and sidewalks.
Thank you, I just want to be sure everybody had that information.
Yeah, and this actually, this information, um, this map, it looks kind of generalized, in a sense, but behind this map are some very sophisticated GIS, uh, shape files. And if you look on the fact sheet, there are two aerial photo examples here in the lower corner. And you can see how, in this example of a, um, kind of a, a road with several houses, uh, the road was highlighted in red, as well as the houses and some of the parking areas around the houses. So, there is a lot of detailed information behind these maps that are on the GIS system. So, for example, if the town of, um, Goss Town, DPW, was, wanted to look at a specific drainage area, they could ask for this information from the planning commission, and we would provide it to you. Uh, it goes down to that level of specificity. And it's fairly accurate, we feel, that, that the best we could at this level of accuracy. So that's really a very useful tool.
May I ask you a question, Jack?
Yes.
Um, it says that fifty-foot buffers are applied to each side of the roads.
Yes.
Is that included in the impervious surface?
Yes, it is, yeah.
So the roads are basically a hundred and, a hundred and seventy feet wide?
Well, some of the right-of-way, the shoulders are considered to be sometimes impervious, and so that was kind of a generalized call there, that we felt that a fifty-foot buffer would capture that. There's sometimes some pull-off areas, driveway openings, and things like that, so it can vary along each section of the road, but fifty feet was felt to be kind of inadequate buffer to capture the area.
On the, on either side of the paved road?
No, uh, I think it's, um, I think it's, I'll have to check on that, I'm not sure.
What did you say, Brian?
It says right there, either side of the paved road.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. And, and is that something that you folks came up with on this GIS level at UNH, or is that a standard?
That was, that was what UNH had prepared, yeah.
Okay.
I guess the question is, is it either or both?
It's both, it's both.
Okay, so either should be changed to both sides of the road?
Yes. Well, in other words, you have fifty-foot buffer on both sides of the road, yes.
It's not, you picked one or the other.
Right, it should be both.
We're into words here.
Yeah, I see that, that's good.
You're making a special point talking about that, and I just have one more question, Jack, if you don't mind. Um, it, so people actually, people actually looked at these photographs?
Yes.
Got them on Sharpie and just kind of overlaid it, so it was a manual thing that somebody did with the GIS?
Well, we did both, there was an automated process, and then we reviewed the automated process and did the manual checks.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
It took a while to produce them, it wasn't an easy task to do.
So this red line on here is, is a GIS shape file?
Is the actual delineation-
Oligon?
Yes.
And are those available to share with the towns?
They are, they are available. So if you have a particular area that you'd like to see more detail, we could provide that to you. So that's really, I think, is the key usefulness of these maps, particularly in Goss Town's case, because you're an MS4 community under this, the EPA stormwater regulations, and you have to show progress in meeting the EPA requirements. So this, this data can help in whatever studies the town does. The other useful thing is, um-
Or else, uh-
Yes.
Or else what, if we don't? What happens if we don't?
It's just a matter of meeting the requirements, whatever the MS4 requirements are. Every year, there's certain performance, uh, measurements that have to be met.
That's EPA?
That's EPA, yes.
But MS4 communities are not all the communities on this map.
No.
Right.
Only Manchester and Goss Town.
Goss Town, Bedford are MS4 communities.
Bedford.
And if we didn't-
Probably.
Anybody within a certain distance of the, of the river, or MS4 communities?
Yes.
If for some reason we don't meet that, what happens?
I don't know, uh, I would talk to your public works director, he could help answer that question.
More about reporting to DES, and DES will find you a letter of non, send you a letter of non-compliance if you don't comply with their regulations, we, I get some of those once in a while.
Yeah, I think it's kind of an administrative review level.
It is.
Um, and there is, uh, all the engineers from all the towns get together and talk about the MS4 requirements in the region. So it's, it's not like this is new information, they deal with it every day. Uh, the other really, uh, I think, key thing about this data is, um, we, we just did a culvert assessment project, and we'll be coming back to you with that information whenever I can get back in touch with Brian and to send you that. And we looked at organism, mainly trout passage through the culverts to make sure that the wildlife habitats were, are being protected, and there's enough connectivity for, um, the protecting the trouts going through the culverts. And, uh, there was, uh, a lot of data that was collected, and the next thing that we'd like to do, collecting that data, is actually do a hydrologic study looking at changes in weather and rainfall intensities. And to do that, um, there's a modeling program that's used to determine the discharge from drainage areas based on the, the intensity of rainfall, the amount of area. It's, it's a, it's an equation called Q equals CIA, so there's something called a runoff coefficient. And the runoff coefficients are based on soils and imperviousness. And so having this impervious data gives us the ability to look and develop some runoff curb numbers, coefficients for these drainage areas in the future. And that could then help enable the modeling, and the modeling then could come back to the town DPW staff and the road agents to help look at, you know, what future culverts need to be replaced or, um, considered for replacement priority in the future, given, uh, potential for blowouts and different rainfall events. So that's a huge-
We usually replace them when there's a hole in the road.
Yeah.
Do you do a muscle census?
No, but this, this is information that really could, could be beneficial to town DPW stuff.
Now, when you said you're looking to go forward, does that mean you need some sort of a commitment from the town, or is this something you're planning to do?
No, this tool, this information, we're presenting it to you just as informational. We'd like you to consider acknowledgement, a receipt of it at least, or acceptance that it is a useful planning tool for you, uh, for the town, uh, just so that we can go back to DES and say, yes, we made the presentation, the planning board's aware of the maps, they acknowledged receipt of it.
Now, how do we benefit from these maps, Jack?
As I mentioned, um, I think the big benefit is looking at the amount of impervious coverage and getting down to the drainage area level, so that as you do drainage studies or modeling, it helps provide you that, some additional information. And, uh, it then kind of raises the awareness of impervious coverage and the impacts of stormwater runoff to water quality.
Um, stormwater runoff is more related to roads where you have contaminants. A large part of your impervious surface maps here are simply houses and roofs, which don't have a lot of contaminants that you would see from a road. Um, I can buy into the road impervious surfaces being considered for contamination, but I don't know how all the rest of the roofs and other red dots on our map really have a, a negative impact on the, um, watershed. Maybe you can enlighten me?
No, I, I would agree with you, um, Paul- No, I, I would agree with you wholeheartedly on that. The only thing I would add to that is it just affects the amount of the discharge, the rate of the discharge-
Okay.
-because it adds additional volume. And when you add the water to the contaminants, then you have the issue of the first flush that needs to be treated in each of the areas. So, it is a concern, but it, you're right, it's not a contaminant, source of contamination.
Phil?
The only thing, though, that I would add to that is on your residential two, your high densities-
Yeah.
-your smaller lots, where you'll have that water from the roof goes immediately into a driveway, and that goes into the road. So, you're getting more of, more water from the roof, and you're getting a greater velocity and volume to carry it away. When you get into your outlying areas where you're looking at two-acre lots or more, that roof that you have is gonna come off, and it's gonna go into pervious soil.
Yeah.
There'll be less of it going into a driveway that's gonna go onto a road that's gonna go into-
Yeah, I think that's kind of the overall philosophy, is to help encourage greater infiltration of your runoff off your roofs and your less contaminated areas, because it helps recharge the aquifers and the groundwater, the drinking water. Yeah, you're, you're correct. It's the best way to treat it, and low-impact development techniques like that that use natural green space and so forth to help filter the water will help with your aquifer recharge.
Right.
Very good.
So, really, that's, it's, it's an educational thing to help people realize that. I think a lot of people get it, so it's not like a new, new thing, but it's good data to have. I appreciate the opportunity to present it to you and let you know that if you wanted the more detailed GIS data, it is available. Developers actually might find it useful too, because they have to go out and document, survey, a lot of these existing paved areas anyway, as they develop their site plans.
Anybody else on the board have any questions for Jack?
Just one question. You needed accept, acknowledgement from us that we have this?
Yeah, it'd be great if you wanna take a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept the presented maps and, and documentation as playing tools.
I second that.
Motion by Phil, seconded by Brian, to accept the maps and documents from Jack from Southern New Hampshire Planning. Any discussion?
Playing tools.
All those in favor say aye.
Playing tools.
Got it.
You got it?
Got it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Abstained? Mark's abstaining.
Let me, yes, let me, yes.
Johnson, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, as always.
I do have some extras, if you wanna pass around these.
Four percent of the total land area in Gostown being considered impervious, and when you add that fifty-foot buffer on either side of a road, I, I think it would be substantially less. And that doesn't seem like a lot of impervious surface for a town of this size, when you're only four percent.
Well, it's a Gostown is eight percent, and the rest of the watershed is-
Oh, my mistake.
Yeah, Gostown is-
Fifteen hundred and fifty-seven acres.
But that's also take, look at the towns it's taken into consideration.
I'm sorry, I'm reading the, right here under the Piscataquag River area.
Good night.
See you later. Jack, quick question. Is there a baseline for this sort of thing, based on the other studies you've seen in different places? We, we just talked about eight, we just talked about three point nine of impervious surfaces. What's the baseline?
Well, there was a study done by Sally Sewell with New Hampshire DES in the Coastal Zone Program that looked at the impacts of impervious and stormwater on degrading water quality. And she came up with the estimate that ten percent or more starts to show water quality degradation. And that's really just on a drainage area basis, not so much on a big watershed size basis, but more looking at a specific area.
Yeah, that's a totally different thing.
Yeah, it's totally different. So-
Okay.
It's really a question for you all, is, you know, how you feel you wanna look at that on a lot-by-lot basis. It's part of your zoning.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Jack, can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
If we were to look at, like, say, the Pennardville area, I mean, that's the most densest-
Yes.
You know, impervious area, would that percentage, it seems logical that that percentage would go up if we limited it to just that area, right?
Obviously, yes.
Could we-
More compact the development.
Could we get the numbers calculated for certain areas of town, like you say, you could share?
We would provide that information to you, and then you-
Make you do some more.
Yeah.
Well, but the reality is, what you really, I would think that you, the two things you really wanna do it for is your water quality, which would be more where, where are your precincts and your huge, you know, where is your water aquifers in town, which is sort of a, a different, you'd need to identify that as an overlay over this. You're not gonna find many aquifers in the Pennardville area, and it's all serviced by municipal water. So, your concerns in that area really are more of a runoff. So, from that standpoint, I'm not sure what that data would get you. The other place that comes in handy, I think and Jack referred to it when he talked about the culvert work that was done, is what you think of when you think of water as being impervious, is it goes somewhere, and if there's not enough room for it to go, it finds another way to go. Water will find a way to go, and then the culvert, and then that would probably be useful.
Over top the roads.
Drive, yes, one side of driveway, whatever.
So, there are a few private wells, there are a few people in Pennard, handful of people in Pennardville that don't, are not impervious.
Oh, that's, yeah, okay, that's true. But I, I'm just, was thinking in general for Brian to go whipping out calculations for-
Right.
Yeah, it's a lot of data to look at.
Yeah.
But we can give it to-
See, this way, Brian, all you have to do is write a little letter about what we just voted on to Southern New Hampshire. You don't have to crank any debt.
No, I was, well.
Give us a call, we'll talk some more. Okay, all right, have a nice night.
Thanks.
Bye, Jack. Okay, I have just a couple of correspondence and FYI to cover before we adjourn. There is a copy of a timbercut permit for map ten, lot thirty-one on Snook, Lorham Pond Road, the Moore property. Anybody who wants to see the intent for timbercut, it's here. There's a second timbercut permit for lot twenty-three on Snook Road, William and Donna Sula. I assume they're adjacent properties, without knowing, on the same road. There is minutes of the December twentieth, the two thousand twelve meeting of the Southern New Hampshire Planning, MPO Technical Advisory Committee. I don't see a Gostown name on here, so I don't know if we were members or present, but if anybody wants to see the Technical Advisory Committee minutes, they're available. And the last thing is information about the Pennardville Sustainable Community Grant Plan and Smart Code Project. I think this is the grant that was the town received, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Brian?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
We, we did, I'll just give you a quick update. We did finalize our contract finally with the contractor on that. So, it took us a little while, but I think doing the dirty details upfront is gonna hopefully save us some headache going through the project in the future. So-
Who was that that was chosen?
Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative. It's a, it's an out-of-town contractor. They specialize in doing this type of project, so I think we'll get, we'll see some good work out of them. So, we are looking, we, we have notice on our website, actually, and have reached out to a few community members. We know John's already been assigned to this project from the planning board to be on the advisory committee.
Hopefully, you remember that, right?
I heard that, yeah.
And-
That was the day you weren't here.
Right, and I've been working very hard.
That vote too is unanimous, just so you know.
So, we'll, we'll start to have advisory committee meetings. Most likely, we'll have our first one at the end of this month, and we'll, we'll get the process rolling for that, and hopefully, we'll see some good results out of it.
All right, before I let a, a motion to adjourn come forward, I still think that we are without a representative to EDC.
Yes.
If anybody would like to step up and become a planning board member on the EDC Commission, there is an opening available on EDC, and if anybody is willing to do it, we appreciate your help.
And again, for the record, they meet?
The-
First Wednesday of the month.
First Wednesday of the month, however, that's not the case this month. They're meeting like, I think, the twenty-third.
But it's on the calendar on what?
Right.
Okay.
So, and also, I talked to Derek, he said that he's gonna start sending everything to you, Tim, because it sort of defaults to the chairman if, if there's no representative. So, you might just by default get stuff sent to you, but-
Delete, delete.
Any updates on what they have worked on over the, any updates of what they've worked on over the past?
I, I have not really kept up on it. I know.
I don't think we've had anything come to us from them.
No, there hasn't been anything from, from EDC to the planning board.
Well, and I'm gonna say for the record, I don't think it's fair for the committee here to, nobody to step up and help out, since the chair has enough to do as chair plus CIP for this committee. So, hopefully, someone will see the light and help out. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Phil, seconded by?
Brian.
Brian. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-nine.